Ben, I guess we're ready, so we'll go around the room and introduce everybody. So I'm Elizabeth Austin, the mayor, going this way. Nicole Rutter, yes, trustee. Amanda Long, trustee. Kaylee Wykow, planning commissioner.
Michael Lorca, planning commissioner.
Linda Meesner, trustee.
Bruce Grant, planning commissioner.
Coraline Ward, planning commissioner.
Hydrage, Front Range Virus and Fire Force.
Mike West, Fire Chief.
Kevin Garrett, planning commissioner.
Derek Grant was trustee.
Peggy Wickman, trustee.
And the individuals on Zoom.
Leron Erlich, trustee.
Happens all the time there at work.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, good. I'm Bernadette Stevenson, planning commission.
There's one other that joined us on Zoom if you'd like to introduce yourself. You'll need to unmute your microphone.
There we go, I'm Jimmy Ball.
And I'm Pepper McLennahan, I'm the Community Development Director for the town of Milliken.
Thank you.
So if the participants on Zoom would like to mute, unless you want to participate, that'll be a lot less distracting for the presenter. And I apologize for not being there in person, but our presenter tonight is Elizabeth Garner, who is with the State Demographers Office. And as you know, we are getting ready to go into a land use code update. A big part of land use code updates are demographics and projections. And so we've invited Elizabeth here to give a presentation to us, kind of where we're sitting and to update us on the results of the 2020 census and some additional data that has come in since then. And so if there's any other business that I'm missing, Mayor, my apologies again for not being there, it's a little difficult to know what's going on in the room through Zoom. But if you're ready and Elizabeth is ready, we can commence. And thank you for joining us, Elizabeth.
Super, can you hear me? Yep, Pepper can hear me. Perfect, awesome. Guys, thank you so much for inviting me. It's like, I still don't get out very often, so. And trying to get out of the office is like, yay. I also, I'm sure, so I'm with the Department of Local Affairs and I'm sure probably all of you also know Chris Lemay over there in the corner. So he's also with the Department of Local Affairs, so we're comrades and working with Dola. And I'm gonna be doing kind of two different sides. And some of you guys at first might think, why is she doing this? But the reason, will they be able to see the slide deck or do they have copies? Do you know how that's working? Oh, perfect. I'm gonna first kind of tell you about what's going on in Colorado. What's going on in the North Front Range, where Milliken fits in the North Front Range. And then talk a little bit more about Milliken. That way you can see some context and really thinking about where are we moving? What are some of the big trends? And things that maybe we should be thinking about as we're planning and going through this comp plan process. Does that sound good? Perfect. And again, remember this is all for you, so, you know, I'll, you know, Mayor, Clerk, Clerk's managing the session. Just stop me, whatever you want to chat about, something that I might present. All right, so, how do I make it? We can kind of see it. All right, so. It might be harder to see, but I'll take you through it. So the big trends going on in the state. One, population is starting to grow at a slowing rate. And I am sure anyone that is in Weld County is like, you lie. And I agree, I understand, you guys are in a very fast growing part of the state. But we are slowing down and Weld is actually even slowing down, if you can believe it. Migration and mobility are slowing down, fewer people moving. Simply because part of it is aging, but part of it is that Colorado is becoming less competitive. So that's putting some downward pressure, harder and harder to attract the best and the brightest. So it's something to just keep in the back of your head. We're also seeing concentrated growth along the I-25 corridor. This last decade, we saw 95% of our growth in the front range, compared to the previous decade where it was 78%. So there is this huge switch to where we're seeing much more growth concentrated in the front range. Aging, how many of you guys woke up a day older? And we're doing it all the time, but we're also starting to see a big transition into an older age demographic. So that's something that's going to be driving in Weld County as a whole is interesting because it's one of our youngest counties, but one of our fastest aging. So you're gonna have to almost deal with both sides of. You've got lots of families, which I'll talk about in a little bit. You're one of the fastest growing kid populations in the state. So you do have the kiddos, but you also have the aging side. And we're becoming more racially and ethnically diverse. And Weld is part of that picture as well, and actually one of our most diverse counties in the state and has the highest homeownership rate for Hispanics in the state. So some very positive components as well. So what did we see with Census 2020? We saw that the US increased by 22 million people to 331 million. 7.4 annual or 7.4 growth rate, slowest growth in the, in the United States, second slowest growth rate that we've ever seen since the Great Depression in the 1930s. So the US is slowing down. If the US is slowing down, that's gonna have impacts on Colorado and the rest of the country as well. So we're seeing this downward pressure. Colorado increased by 744,000 to reach this 5.7 million, a 14% growth rate, so twice as fast as the US as a whole. Sixth in terms of percentage change, ninth in terms of numeric change. Enough to get that eighth congressional seat in all of the drama. I don't know if you guys participated in the drama, all of the drama that came with that. But we did get that eighth seat. Just to show you a little bit in terms of total population change, because a lot of people think, oh, we're growing exponentially. And if we remember our math classes, that means a curve that kind of shoots up. We don't see that in the orange at all. We actually see a slowing growth rate. So the orange line is growth rate, the blue bars is total growth. We can see that 744,000 that we increased this last decade was the same as we increased last decade, the previous decade. Yes, and slower than the 90s, but faster than the 80s. If we remember the 80s, glorious time I was graduating from high school and college in the 80s. Glorious time to be in Colorado because we had a huge contraction. We had that oil and gas bust, we had the savings and loan bust. We had that very much slower growth in the 90s, between 1980 and 1990. But so you can see that what we're doing is we're not growing exponentially in Colorado, nor are we seeing it actually even in this area. We'll get this thing to me, like me. All right. When we look at total population change, red, orange, yellow counties are the counties that increased. All of the shades of blue declined. They had 16 counties decline in population over the decade. But the aggregate of those 16 counties accounted for 7,000 people. So from this map, you can see the growth along the I-25 corridor. You can see 95% of that growth there. And where we did see the declines was really across the periphery, the eastern plains, San Luis Valley, and a little bit in the northwest part of the state. So what were the findings for here, for Milliken and for Weld County as a whole? So if we see, look at the chart or the table, we can see Weld County and the population over the different timeframe. So Weld County as a whole is up to 328,000, an increase of about 70,000 over the decade. If we look at Milliken, we can see the growth from, you know, 1,600 to 2,800 to 600, now at 8,300 over the last, this last decade, an increase of 49%. And Milliken's share of total Weld County is increasing over time. Simply you guys are growing faster than other places, but you're also starting at a smaller rate. But you can see that growth over the time. I put in here comparisons then to other municipalities. I only picked municipalities over 4,000 because Weld County has too many municipalities to put on one chart. So if we look there, and you can't, and I'm sorry, you can't see the very top of it, but the first column where it says 252, that's 2010. The next column is 2020. The third column is numeric change and then the percentage change. And we can do some comparisons to what you look like relative to other places in Weld County. You know, other places around, starting at around 5,000. So we can see, you know, like the Lockview part and how it increased a little bit faster than Milliken. We can look at Severance, which is a little bit smaller, increased by more, by 142%. So from that 3,000 to 7,000. You can look at Eaton, Deacono, all of the different places relative to Milliken. If we look at like close by neighbors, so Evans or Windsor, you can see, look at those different growth rates and where, and a Milliken fits into that total picture. When we look at total population change, it's really important to know that there's two components that drive it. One is natural increase, which is the blue component. The red component is net migration, the ins minus the outs. At the bottom, this chart starts in 1970 and goes all the way through 2020. Couple of things I want you to see, one, we're slowing down. If you look at that far right side, we can start to see a slowing in the population growth over time. And that's important to know because it started before COVID. So we kind of hit our peak in 2015 and we've been slowing ever since. And that is driving some of the changes in Colorado, even though we're forecast to increase, we're increasing at a slower rate. The blue component's really important to see the fact that we're slowing down because bursts have started to slow and increase, and we're starting to see increases in deaths even pre-COVID, simply because we're older. So on that chart specifically, the blue component, so is that what you're?
Define natural increase.
So natural increase is births minus deaths. Does that make sense? And then the red is net migration, the ins minus the outs.
You're defining people who moved, how they came in. Are you identifying those people as different from the net change?
So in that net change, we take everyone that moved in, let's pretend it's 100 people moved in, and let's say 50 moved out. So then your net migration would be 50. Does that make sense? Kind of?
That's certain people that didn't move in or out, correct, that were just a part of Colorado.
Correct. Yeah, and maybe this one will help a little bit more, I'm gonna focus just on Weld. So the blue, the dark blue line is the total population change in Weld County. The green line is net migration, the total ins minus the outs. The gray dashed line are all of the births. And the purple line are the deaths. So a couple of things that are very different in Weld is your births are actually still increasing. We saw something for the state as a whole and the country as a whole, where we peaked in our births in 2007 and have started to see a decline in the country. And I've got another chart to show that. Weld is actually staying nice and steady on their births. A lot of that is because you attract young adults to the county and young adults are the ones that have kids. You are seeing a purple, the increase in deaths. And that's been increasing over time simply because we've got more people in age groups that have higher death rates. And we're gonna continue to see that, we do that, we die, and that's just part of what we do. The net migration is an interesting piece, is the fact that Weld County, what's driving more the population growth right now is net migration. We can see kind of troughed around 2010, we saw a decline in the net migration or a slowdown in the net migration where the births became larger. But for the most part, what we're seeing is that it's net migration that's a larger component, which is different than the state as a whole. The state as a whole, we're seeing it's about 650,000 births relative to about 420,000 net migrations. So births, or the state as a whole, are the largest component and net migration is a second. But we can definitely see that here as well, or here, that net migration is larger than the births. That makes sense? Any questions on that? Hopefully that was clear. This is so funny. So if we look at your growth rate relative to Weld County as a whole, the red line is Weld County's growth rate. And it has been saying right around that 3 and 4%. But we can see these bumps in Milliken. And you probably all are really well aware, when they happen, that's typically when you guys bring on new housing units. You bring in a new development, it brings in new housing units, you see that big bump. And then it's relatively flat, growth rate goes back to about what the county is. And then it bumps back up when you guys bring on more housing units. And that makes sense, because obviously people have to live in housing. That make? But I did want to show you this slowdown in births. This is for both the United States and Colorado. Colorado's the orange line, United States is blue, both peaking in 2007 with slowdown. So we've got about 525,000 fewer births now in the nation than we had in 2007, but we've got more women of childbearing age. The reason I bring this up is because this is what is the biggest piece that will slow down total population growth in the country and in Weld and in the future. Because once you don't have a kiddo, it takes a long time to create a new one, right? I mean, when we think, if we started stopped, this sounds funny, but when we stopped producing people in 2007, we had this big slowdown. I mean, to get a person ready and in the labor force, it takes like a good 25 years. And so once you haven't had them, it's gonna take a long time to build back up and/or you just manage with fewer. But this will put downward pressure in the future, but just not right now on Weld. But you guys are doing a long run comp plan, not a short run comp plan, so that's why I'm bringing it up. If we look at the country, all of the blue shaded states have had an absolute decline in the under 18 population. These are gonna be states competing for labor force with Colorado, with Weld County. And that's important to know, that we, it's not gonna be like history where we've always been able to attract and retain. We are gonna be competing for the best and the brightest even more so than we have historically. Fortunately, Colorado's still at a slight positive. We, of that 748, yeah, 744,000, 38,000 of it were kids, were kids under the age of 18. That we saw that total growth over the decade, 744,000, 38,000 are kids. Only 5% of our total growth this decade were kids. Last decade, it was 17%. So a huge departure from what we're used to. And again, this is gonna be more competition for kiddos. But again, Weld is doing well because you are growing kids. And that sounds funny, I, I should, you're having kids, not growing kids.
We're an agricultural community.
There you go, it fits. Fits. So this map shows Colorado and the change in the under 18 population. All of the shades of blue are counties that had an absolute decline in the under 18 population over the last decade. Weld County represented alone 40% of the growth in the under 18 population. Alone, just Weld. But the number of kids that you had this last decade was less than the previous decade. So even the kiddos are slowing down here, but Weld had the largest share of growth of any county in the state, which actually bodes really well for future economic development, future labor force growth, all of those pieces because they're actually here. You don't have to try and attract them, they're already living in your community. But again, what you'll see from that map is that there's no part of the state that was immune to a decline. You look at the southeast, you look at the west, you look at the northwest, you even look at the Denver metro counties of Boulder and Jefferson, both experiencing absolute decline in kids. But that does mean that potentially Weld will face more competition for those kids to try and bring them into other parts of the state because we need, eventually we're gonna need labor force in other parts. So if we just even look at that population change, the top by age, the top charts are the total numbers, so if you wanted to see those. But the bottom part shows that change. And what we can see is Weld increased that under 18 population by about 16,000. Milliken increased that under 18 population by about 642. Your growth in the kiddos ended up being 35%. For Weld, it was 24%. For Colorado, it was 3%. So Milliken actually even grew kids faster than the county average and obviously much faster than the state average. So you are attracting families with children. And/or the families that you have here are having children. It's either a migration or a birth.
How do you qualify the growth versus the child that are between moving here? Like, are you, are you signifying whether or not they were born here and grew here? Or are you just looking at they, they're here and they're under anything?
Right now, that's the only thing that we can do. We do track births and we can, and I kind of showed you the births in that previous chart showing the number of births. We also have just a total change. So we know that some will move in on that, on that side. But then every year, somebody ages out, you know, somebody goes from 18 to 19. So we can track that. We don't have the 2010 data yet to make it perfect. We can give you an estimate for how many move in versus leave. And actually, I've got another chart and a couple more slides to show you our estimate for the youngins. But Weld does a great job of attracting youngins as well. We don't do it by municipality because it's just way too hard to do it by municipality. But we do, you know, Weld is a unique county. It can actually almost attract anyone, any age group, which, just a couple of slides from here, I'll show you that. So this is Colorado and its net migration by age. You can see highly concentrated at the 22 to 37, that's what Colorado attracts. You can't see along the bottom, I'm sorry. If you could see along the bottom, it would show that peak where you see the peak height. I'm gonna say it's right around 25, maybe 27. That, the older age, so it's age distribution ages along the horizontal axis. Starts at zero, goes to like 85 plus. Where it sticks out a little bit later on, right here, that's about the 65 mark. 22 to 37 is our bread and butter for Colorado. This is Weld County, and you can almost see the numbers at the bottom. You get a lot more at that younger age group because of the college, because of UNC. And we typically see in a lot of places that have a university, that then we see an outmigration afterwards. Just because not everybody stays in the school. But look at all other age groups compared to the state as a whole. 22 to 37 is really for the state. Really Weld County, except for right at that kind of, it's, and I'm gonna say again, right around 27 to 30, you see an out, but every other age group, you see a very positive in migration. And that's also bodes well for the county, the fact that you can attract anyone. That you're not just attracting older people or not just super young. If I showed you Denver's, it is concentrated at 25. Who wants a bunch of 25-year-olds? No, I'm kidding. They're great, but imagine having 30-year-olds and 40-year-olds and 50-year-olds and 60-year-olds and 70-year-olds, being able to attract anyone is, I think, a lot more positive than when you can only attract like a certain age group. Why do we typically attract people? Why do, the biggest correlation with net migration is job growth. Blue bars are job growth, red line is net migration. It's not a direct correlation, but it's highly related. And so when, in Colorado over time, we've seen, when we grow stronger jobs, we tend to have a need for net migration. The Denver metro area definitely has a challenge with this idea. So many places are like, yeah, no, we totally want jobs, but we don't want any more people. And I'm like, but a job is a person and a housing unit is where that job sleeps at night. You cannot have job growth if you don't have housing growth and population growth to fill those pieces. And if you're anti-people, which there's a lot of part of Colorado that are, then stop growing jobs. And it is very, very frustrating, I think, where a lot of communities have like, put these growth limits on, but they want the jobs. They're not putting any limit on any jobs, just on people. And it's like, you've got to have that balance, but it all depends on where you are. Because you guys are in an interesting situation where you've got a large group of people relative to your number of jobs. This is Weld as a whole, showing that net migration is the black line and the job growth is the blue bars. You can see again that correlation over time. But for a lot of times, we do see migration higher than job growth because Weld County honestly is a big labor shed for a lot of places. There are about 80,000 more workers in Weld than there are jobs. So we know that people leave the county to go to, whether it's up north, go west, go east, go south. We know that Weld is a big commuter shed. I'm not, that's horrible. Does it get, it doesn't get any better, does it? In terms of being able to show the top part of that graph? Oh, okay, no, that's all right.
I was hoping they could see that.
I was just, not being able to see the very top part. Oh, there we go. I was, I see what you're saying, that then we couldn't see the people. Gotcha. Okay, so just for a little bit, and then we can bring them back. When we're looking at this, it's important to know the types of jobs that are growing in your community. Because that will influence the types of housing that you also might be interested in. What this graph is showing is the growth in jobs from the pre-recession peak levels of employment through 2008 through 2019, through the beginning before COVID. We can see that the two fastest growing areas were mining and construction, then followed by transportation, warehousing, manufacturing, and then accommodations, food service, and admin support and waste management. It's all broken down by wage rate. Mining, oil and gas, it's the whole bundle. And it's broken down by wage rate. So it's got green as a high wage, purple as a mid-wage, and red as a low wage. So the, why this is somewhat helpful is if in the future you do kind of a market analysis of the types of housing, for example, or the types of whatever it might be, this gives you an idea of the types of jobs that were growing. We can also look at just totals. Where are we now in 2020? Broken down, number one employer in Weld County is construction, then manufacturing, then retail trade, local government, health services. So you can see that, and again, broken down by wage rate. Again, it's helpful to see potentially what's out there and what's driving growth. So I started playing with commuter data, because I thought that this would be interesting for you guys to look at to see what's happening within your own community. So this initial graph is showing commuters, and it's showing those that live in Milliken by where they work. So where you see on the map, the purples are where different people work, and it's a darker color purple is the highest concentration. On the far left-hand side is a list of the communities where they work. So number one ends up being Greeley, then Loveland, then Denver, Fort Collins, Longmont, Johnstown, Aurora, Windsor, Boulder, Evans, finally we get to Milliken. If we look at the graph on the right-hand side, that's what I find really interesting. The large light green circle are the worker residents in Milliken. The dark green circle, little circle, is the number of jobs in Milliken. Where they overlap is where they both work and live in Milliken. So what we can see here is only two percent of those, only two percent of those that live in Milliken work in Weld. But is that unusual? Not really. I mean, people make choices about where to live typically based on the type of housing, potentially on the school district, other amenities in the community, could be even family. Where your job is, is, where did I get it? You know, it could be anywhere, based on your skill set, et cetera. So this is not that unusual to see, but I thought it would be interesting to see here that you do have this big disconnect, which also means, who's your transportation? Is there a transportation person at the table? The blue circle, no.
We have a street truck over there.
Over there somewhere?
He just started.
Oh. And that would be my, one of my concerns. And looking at your comp plan is the fact that everybody's going to be driving, leaving and coming. So this comes from the Bureau of Labor Statistics and the Census Bureau, which has data on where people live and where people work, and that's what comes together. Now, is this perfect? No. Shows what?
Shows JP Morgan Chase New York, but I work from home. I don't.
Absolutely. And so, like, right now, I don't know if you can see at the very bottom over here, says other locations, over twenty percent. You fall in there. So it would pick you up? And it does pick up, you know, and we get these weird ones. Like, you're like, yeah, no, she can't be commuting daily between Milliken and New York. And you would see that and be like, that's weird, but we know that telecommuting is huge. So you're right, not everybody's driving. And in the future, maybe even fewer people are driving. But what we can figure out is those that are local, and you would know which direction they're going, we also have a little bit of the information on the industries that they work in, so that that way you can also get a general idea of what kind of folks are there. So this is vice versa. This is for the folks that work in Milliken, where do they live? Number one Greeley, then Milliken, then Johnstown, Evans, Fort Collins, Loveland, Windsor, and that comes up with that top, top ten on that side. And you can then also see where they're coming in from. And again, you're, potentially it's the case where they're not really commuting, maybe between Milliken and Denver, you know, where they, you know, live in Denver and commuting up to Milliken. Maybe they are, maybe they aren't. Maybe it's more of a telecommute, maybe it depends on the type of firm that it is. Because you guys, I was really surprised to see within the town limits, it was showing a very high oil and gas employment, I mean, it's the largest employer. Are they all living in Milliken or even in Greeley or even in Weld, or could they be coming up from Denver? And more of a telecommuting. And that's what this is. This is showing for the jobs in Milliken, what are they in and how much are they making and kind of like their age dynamics? So very few are in that, well, about twenty-two percent are in the younger age group, younger than thirty, about fifty-five percent in that thirty to fifty-five-year-olds, and then another twenty percent in the fifty-five plus. You can see the different earnings, the largest in the highest earning group in more than, of course, I can't read that far, thirty-three?
Yes, it's thirty-three hundred.
Sixty-six percent in that group. But then if we look at that list, and I'm sorry, maybe you guys can see it, the different places, number one is showing oil, mining, oil and gas at four hundred and twenty-nine, about thirty-two percent of all of the jobs in Milliken are from that industry. So it's also kind of interesting to look at. This does not include sole proprietor. So let's say you own your own company, you're not picked up on this. If you have wage and salary workers, then it would be picked up on them.
If somebody works in Milliken, but the company is based out of, let's say, Johnston, they're going to show up as a Johnstown employee, not as a Milliken job?
Correct. They would show up as a Johnstown job, and then you would show up as a commuter from Milliken to Johnston.
Even though you might work in Milliken and live in Milliken, but the company you worked for is registered in Johnston.
So are you, I'm, I'm sorry, so.
Finding, for instance, we might have a large population of workers here, but the company they work for is either based in Denver, based in Loveland, based in Greeley, whatever, they're not supposed to have headquarters in Milliken. So they're technically employed and their paycheck comes from another town, even though they might live here and quite likely even work nearby in different sites.
Right, so a lot of it depends, and I know that's not a helpful answer. This is all through the Department of Labor, and you're supposed to report workers by their place of work. So it's hard when it's a teleworker. So, and I can use myself as an example. So I work for the state, I am reported in Denver at thirteen thirteen Sherman Street, but I am telecommuting right now, and I still live in Denver, but I'm in a different spot in Denver. I am picked up at thirteen thirteen Sherman Street because that is my place of employment. Now, with oil and gas, that's a really hard one because most of it doesn't occur at the site of the headquarters. There are a lot of headquarters employees, and the headquarters employees should be picked up at the headquarters, be it in Denver or wherever else that headquarters is. But let's say you're working off-site somewhere up in Morgan County. If you're working on a project in Morgan, you should be picked up actually as employed in Morgan. The firm should show you there. Do all of the firms always do it right? Not necessarily. But like, let's say that there's a factory in Milliken. Should the workers all be picked up at the factory in Milliken? Yes. Even if there's an accountant that's telecommuting doing it, they should still be picked up in Milliken, at that factory, but that.
I'm not going to take this far out too much, but is this from voluntary census data or is this from acquired from, say, you know, IRS based of, you know, where your employment is paying, you know, registered address or what, where is this data coming?
Right, so that gets back to the question before. So there are two pieces of data. One comes from the Department of Labor that would be looking at your PASTA. The other one does come from the Census, picking up where you live. Because the way that we typically always play with this data is that any employment data is by place of work, and any residential information or housing information is by place of residence. So that, you know, that's how we can get this, you know, great information showing a lot of people that live in Weld County that work in Denver, and we can show that in the map.
Again, that's where I'm trying to kind of draw a little bit of a question mark because it depends on the validity and the value of the data, because, you know, I know for some person, for instance, that lived here, worked here, visited the office twice in, I think it was Aurora, but that's where the paycheck comes from.
Right, absolutely. Is it perfect? No. Does it give you a general idea? Yes. Is this probably, I'm going to say probably eighty percent correct? Probably.
Like what's the very?
The correctness on that.
And on the other hand, this does not.
Not include any sole proprietor. So all of your ag employment, like if you've got farmers here, it is very unlikely that they are in any of this data. So that's, so it's always important to know some of these caveats with the data, but we also know that there is going to be a lot of driving, because where people live and where people work are not the same. So you will be driving for most of the folks on this list.
Just into account later down the road, seeing so many people are quitting with Johnson becoming sole proprietors?
No, we pick it up in different, in different data to pick up the sole proprietor, so we can look at that in terms of total estimated jobs. Our assumption with sole proprietors is that they live and work in the same place, which is probably not always correct. So there's not a lot, there's no other data that then you can pull them from because they're not showing up in the employment records, they're only showing up in the household record. I know, it's, it's the best that can be done.
We try. Oil and gas is problematic because there's a large number of oil and gas that move around there and during that, right? They're out in the field checking things and they have temporary locations and things like that, so it's hard to actually track that data anywhere I go with it.
That's what I was trying, maybe understand is the quality of the data, but also in that same realm. You know, I know for a fact that the guys that I interacted with, that, you know, they live here or Johnstown locally, but all of their, their, you know, job is in, you know, let's say Loveland or Greeley, but they never go there. That's like the office, that's where the job is registered.
Sterling.
But we're at sites in fields all over here, working here. So that's what I'm kind of trying to understand, like this ninety-eight that I see of people that live and work in Milliken, how accurate is that? Because, I mean, I'm imagining it's more like, I know probably at least a couple hundred, but I'm trying to.
Maybe I work in Milliken.
Yeah, beside, I'm just trying to.
Right, right.
Put the information together with the real life of what I'm seeing and experiencing.
Yeah. And you know, there's some stuff that can be done if you actually wanted to dig into it. You could pick a firm that you're interested in, that you know is relatively large, you know, it needs to be more than like ten people. And we can figure it out, and we can look at it, and see where they're registered, if they're registered here or somewhere else. Again, because of tax purposes, firms are supposed to report you by where you're working. Do they always do it? No.
Like myself, I mean, I work in four counties probably. So I mean, yeah, I mean, you're driving, here you might be here for an hour or there.
Yeah, so in that case, you, who knows, you're probably just listed.
Where that firm is located.
Right here, because there's so many residents who are engaged in their oil and gas business and are out there.
Right, that wouldn't necessarily be perceived in this data set that are really kind of here, but we just don't see them in.
Yeah.
And I could, even in my business, I might find myself interacting with two or three counties a day.
Yeah. Sorry.
You're totally, and I think it's, I think it's good to have those conversations to know how reliable the data is. Yeah, we're not going to be picking up everybody, but I would say this is a very good idea of the data. So I wanted to compare you guys to your neighbors. So I've got, it starts with Evans, Johnstown, and Windsor. And interestingly, it's not that different. Very little overlap with who works and lives in each place. The shares are a little bit higher in terms of, in Evans, it's about five point six percent that live and work in the same area. And again, a little bit difference in terms of that size where there's fewer jobs and more people. Then we get Johnstown, there's almost equal between jobs and people, but still not a large share that live and work in Johnstown. It's only about five percent. And then Windsor's the last one, it's got the largest overlap of people that live and work at nine point seven percent and a little bit closer in terms of jobs and people, but again, more, more people, more residents than there are jobs. But kind of interesting to see.
Can this be in any way a representation of cost of living to wage earning capabilities of the areas?
Well, totally.
You know, the cost of living in that area, you have to work in a higher area to pay for that, you know, there's a disparity in each, in each community with the cost of living in that community and the wage earning capabilities in that community.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely. So that's why we never expect it to be a hundred at all, and people get to choose type of housing, type of all of these things that are unique within each community. But what it helps to understand is potential traffic. And that the whole idea behind this is trying to get an idea on your comp plan of thinking about if you put in even more housing, how much more transportation, all of those different pieces. So that's more the story behind it, not that it's unusual, that it happens.
Pay attention, because there are two state highways running through town, and they're both getting so busy, you can barely get on them.
Milliken with, with where it's situated, Denver Metro, Fort Collins, Greeley, it's almost a veteran community in the sense that there's so many more people that it's more affordable, but it's still a manageable commute to other areas that you can earn more. So you have a better quality of life earning more somewhere else than just driving thirty, forty-five minutes. So it makes sense that all the population is growing.
We don't have a huge amount of industry in town.
Yeah, no, I was actually so surprised how easy it was to get here. It, it was super fast, super easy, and, you know, even compared to, say what?
Impossible.
Yeah, no, I didn't do that. I went up.
Twenty-five, just to Johnstown and came over. I was thinking about doing the circle on the way back. So I, no, okay. Yeah.
I like you to go right twenty-five.
Well, we'll take a vote at the very end on what I should do on my way home. Yeah, eighty-five is dark, and so I, it could be scary, not scary, but like, like I would hit something. I'm not a bad driver, but. All right, so let's talk about housing a little bit, because this gets into, I think, actually what you're more interested in. So one of the things that was really odd over this last decade, Colorado built seven hundred, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand housing units. Colorado built 700, 278,000 housing units over this last decade compared to the previous decade where we created or built 404,000 housing units. So this last decade, we built 126,000 fewer housing units than we did the previous decade. Yet we grew by the same amount in terms of total population. I wish it was just water. Um, water is a piece. Does anybody remember the Great Recession? Is the Great Recession? And that's what, what this chart is showing on the two sides. On the left side is Weld, on the right side is Milliken. Not that I would expect Milliken. Um, it's so, it, I don't want to call you so small, but you're small enough to see the date, you know, things coming in and out. But Weld, um, very interesting to see. And if you look at Colorado, it almost looks exactly the same as, as Weld does. With the Great Recession, we stopped building. We went to, we were, had over like 50,000 building permits per year for the state as a whole, went down to 10 within like three years. And stayed low for seven years. So it is really due to, we probably overbuilt a little bit first decade. That 404 might have been a little too much. But then went into this decade and didn't build anything. So it's a problem when we overbuild, it's a problem when we underbuild. And I'm sure that's probably a lot of what Milliken thinks about in terms of the future. How do we avoid too much and too little? Right, because we don't want to get into a bad spot either side. But that's, so in Weld, between, um, that gives you the total number of housing units in each decade in 2010 and 2020 and the growth in each decade. So in Weld, they went from 30,000 housing units to only 23, not that big a difference. Okay, but still different. And in Milliken, you went from 1,075 to 858. So not a huge drop, but again, a drop across the board. No place was, was uniquely different. But it does create problems and this shows it for the state as a whole. Where early in the 2000s, we probably overbuilt. The orange bar is housing units, the black line is households. But then from about 2007, all the way through until about 2016, we probably underbuilt. That's where we had more households coming online than we had housing units. We got to kind of our tightest crunch point in 2016 in terms of looking at the number of housing units to households. And that's also when we started to see a spike in house rates was in 2016. And it's been accelerating ever since. Now we're getting to a point where we are building more housing units than households. But how long will it take to make up that difference? And there's a lot of what I call non-housing housing. I think Milliken is probably immune from it a little bit, but it was something to keep an eye on. We know that a lot of people have second homes and a lot of people have VRBOs. And you wouldn't even necessarily think of Denver having a lot of short-term rentals. We doubled the number of short-term rentals in that decade. Uh, now we've got over 8,000 short-term rentals in Denver County. And you're thinking to yourself, why would anybody want? Well, a lot of people would prefer staying in a house than in a hotel when they're visiting. Same with family, et cetera. And I, to be honest with you, I think pot's an issue as well. You can't typically smoke pot at a hotel. But if you've got, if you're staying at a private house, you can go outside in the backyard and smoke. So just keep an eye on it. Keep an eye on that that is a trend that we're seeing is this increase in short-term rentals. Um, again, I don't think that Milliken, you would see that, but God knows, maybe. Uh, we've seen it in other places, so just be aware. It totally impacted our home values in Colorado. We've got the fifth highest median home value and the 12th highest median household income. Again, making Colorado less competitive. And we're getting older. I'm not going to spend, I'm going to fly through these, uh, within just a couple of minutes. But age is really important and you should know your age of your community, know your age of your county. Because then you know what kind of services are demanded and what kind of housing stock people are interested in. But we are getting older. This is Colorado's age distribution. Black line is at age 65. Our peak person is 29 years old. Uh, you can see the slowdown on the left-hand side, the fewer, like there's fewer zero-year-olds than there are 60-year-olds. You can see a large number of people aging into the 65 plus. But please notice that left-hand slowdown in the peak at 29. This is Weld County. Totally different age distribution. See how it's almost flat? I mean, you do see a slowdown in the last five years in kiddos, but really almost very flat from five through 40. Uh, you get a little spike at the college student age. But it's all, you do have a lot more younger people. And that makes a difference because it's typically younger families that then look into buying homes and then have kids. There's not a lot of older folks in Weld County, but we do see people aging into that older age groups. That will have an impact on public service, on public service demand, especially like buyer and ambulance services. In some of the counties in Colorado that you would never expect it, their largest increase in demand is for folks that have fallen and had problems. So be aware of that as well. So we are a really young state, but we're aging fast. I'm not going to hit a lot of these points. You guys have copies, I think, of the, of the piece. But just be aware that you're aging in Colorado, in Weld County and probably in Milliken as well. And just be aware of who that is and who may need services. In Colorado, over this next decade, our fastest growth is forecast to be in the 65 plus. We're forecast to increase by another 742,000, about the same as this last decade. And 332,000 of that is supposed, is forecast to be in the 65 plus. About 43% of all of our growth. And I know a lot of you are thinking, but I don't see that we are migrating a lot of people here that are older. It's like, no, it's me. I'm going to age into that 65 plus. Plus, just looking around the room, general feel, some of you will be too. So we'll be growing just by existing. And that's important because that's driving types of jobs like health services, which has also been a fast growth area in Weld County, uh, as a whole. Very little growth in the 017 and the 18 to 24. Hopefully, if we can migrate them here in that 25 to 44, we'll see them grow. Weld County, again, a little bit younger. But still, some of the fastest growth in that 65 plus, but in absolute numbers, still more growth in the 45 to 64 and in the 25 to 44. Um, as well as almost the same amount of growth in the 017. Why do I mention this? Because again, you're going to be growing more families than the Colorado average. And that's important because housing type changes based on age. So looking at schools and looking at house type is going to be really important. So we forecast Weld County by looking at the total population in Weld and looking at the total job growth in Weld and looking at commuting patterns. And that creates our forecast for Weld. We are forecasting Weld to increase by over 300,000 by 25. It's the fastest growing county that we're forecasting in the state. Second is El Paso County, and then we've got Adams County coming in. Now, this is an unconstrained projection. But my water guy is back here in the corner avoiding me. But this has no water in that forecast at all. Nobody in Weld has actually let us know if there's a water constraint. But that was the, one of the very first things I heard you guys mention when we saw that slowdown in housing growth was, oh, it's got to be water. But we don't have a water constraint anywhere. But I think that, especially after talking with Pepper on the phone, maybe that's something that needs to be in Welds. You know, we forecast at the county level and then we aggregate down to the municipalities. But I think that's something that we need to be obviously thinking about. Can Weld even handle 619,000 people? An increase from, you know, currently right at that 331,000? So that would be almost totally doubling the total number of housing units. But anyway, so we've got some work to do on our end. Talking with Weld County as a whole and probably looking at an aggregate of the municipalities and what water the municipalities have. But the bigger point is, that's what we're forecasting. Again, the most growth of any county in the state we're forecasting. Simply because of its location, location, location. We look at the components, we can see the burst death and migration. And that piece, so certainly burst after 2035 would be the fastest, would be the largest component of that change. Things slowing down out into the future a little bit more. Uh, really starting after 2030, slowing down a smidge in terms of that growth. So then the question would be, where does Milliken fit? So we ran a couple of scenarios. Looking at Milliken's share of growth over the last several years. So if we look at the orange line, that is looking at Milliken's share of Weld's growth on average. And that is also the top line. So using a 3.2 growth rate, a share of the growth about being 2.8% would end up the population right around 17,000. But that's just an example. Because a lot of times people, when they're looking at their municipalities, they're like, well, what's reasonable? Well, if we use the share of growth, that's what that, um, 17,000 comes out at. If we look at the trend, the share of, Milliken's share of Weld's trend in growth, that takes you up then to the gray line, which then puts you at about 21,000. If we use a growth rate, which is then looking at a 4.2% growth rate, which then starts to look exponential, that's what an exponential line would look like, an increasing at an increasing rate. Puts you guys up at about 30,000. But that gives you all different potential. If we just use an example of what have you done historically? Well, between 2000 and 2010, you increased by 1,075 housing units. I get, just rounded it to 1,000. That would, if you did 1,000 every decade, so 100 every year out through 2050, that would increase your population basically every decade by about 3,000 people. Take you up to about 17,000. If you did what you did last decade, increasing by about 850 housing units each year or over the decade, that ends up being about, um, uh, 2,500 people every 10 years. So about 250 people each year. That takes you to about 16,000. Both of those are actually slower than those other examples that I gave you. But this just gives you something to think about. And again, on this line, uh, well, unconstrained, there is no water, there is no land, there is no services. You could be like some of our municipalities and they're not growing anymore. They said done. So that could be an option too, it could be absolutely zero. Depending on what you guys are in. Any shockers, any thoughts on this piece? Are these all scenarios you've kind of thought about? So just to hit the last piece and then go back to any questions that you guys might have. So we're forecasting Colorado to increase from that 5.7 million currently to about 7.5 million by 2050. If anybody had seen previous forecasts, uh, we had been over 9 million by 2050. So this is definitely a slowdown primarily because of the Great Recession. And then COVID has done a big dampening in terms of our growth. Now, we do have a couple of counties that have given us water build-out numbers. So like Douglas County has given us a constraint. A couple of mountain counties have given us constraints in terms of build-out, in terms of total housing unit. Broomfield has given us a spatial build-out in terms of how many total housing units may accommodate. Um, like I said, we don't have anything for Weld. And the way that we do, again, our forecast is we take our total population and you are our supply of workers. We look at all of the industries in Weld County and how they're forecast to grow over time. That's our demand for workers. So we've got our demand for workers, our supply for workers. And where they don't equal, we either migrate people in or out. And that's why we're seeing Weld's forecast up at 617,000 is simply because of, one, its size, two, its industries, three, its people. Now, have we changed people's forecasts simply because of what they've asked? Absolutely. Um, we don't forecast municipalities and that's why we come up with these scenarios because it is number one, based on housing units, right? And how much you guys can accommodate. So any feedback, any thoughts? I don't know if you want to bring the folks online back on. I don't know if Pepper wants to say anything.
I'll defer to questions in the room. Just a general statement from me, this is terrific for leading into our comp plan and a, a great teamwork for doing that. So I really thank you for coming and presenting this information.
You're welcome, thank you.
What do you see about Colorado that's not as attractive as what maybe was a few years back?
Price. So the two, the two big things that are slowing things down, one is this slowdown in births. And that really actually caught almost the whole country by surprise. Uh, we are now, Colorado's, uh, total fertility rate is 1.4. Replacement is 2.1. We are, and the US is 1.6. So we're two points lower than the US in terms of total fertility rate. Um, you saw that one chart that I showed on housing. And Colorado's got, again, the fifth highest median home price, but only the 12th highest median household income. I think for a long time, people could say, yeah, I can make it. And I think now people are like, yeah, this is really hard to make it. And I think like this telecommuting component is very interesting. Could people have the job in Colorado, let, yet live in Kansas? Or Nebraska, or is it a lower cost place? Or could it be that their job is in Denver and they can live in Milliken? Fine. So I think there's a lot of uncertainties looking at what that's going to look like. But that's what's making us less competitive nationally.
Because you'll notice that it's difficult to teleport to Colorado based on policy. So now you have employers saying Colorado residents need not fly because they can't teleport to other places as easily as Colorado stipulations about what has to be put out on the job offer and things like that. So that's better policy and that's driving a lot of people.
Oh, I, I agree with you. I, and I, that's where, one of the things where I don't know if people actually think long run or think big picture about those connections. You know, I think it was, let, yeah, no, I mean, I think people were trying to. Yeah. No, I mean, I think people were trying to, you know, build equity into things without thinking, oh, what's that going to do to Colorado's competitive edge? Yeah, no, I agree. Policy's big.
Yes. So I think it's a good country, it's cheap. But people I know who've worked for many years are like, wow, we barely talk to them.
I think that seems, well, I'm kind of curious because all this data is out to 2020 census. And we're, you know, I know as of the beginning of 2021, at least the realm that I've worked in took another day. And so, you know, just the guy that I know, you know, they're down in Texas now or going to, you know, there's, it's, you know, I would probably say of the people that I'm around, we're probably down to a 10% of who used to be there just one year ago. So even this data is now so and so drastically different. Not because, you know, not, not the error of the data, but just because.
Well, we also have this rather small world event that has changed the face of a lot of things. There's an article in the news today about Colorado probably slower in recovering hospitality industry than many other places. Just because of demographics and other things.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
And interestingly, Weld is one of the slowest regions recovering right now from COVID. With those additional downturn in jobs, the oil and gas industry is struggling some in terms of those jobs. So yeah, it's, it's interesting. You know, Weld has done a great job about diversifying itself, but it's still having a hard time recovering from COVID. And again, who knows what that total long-term impact from COVID is going to end up being.
I don't have a comment. One thing I think is just basically the quality of life is deteriorating. Because people come in for the recreation. Now, right now, if you want to go to Rock Mountain National Park, you have to get a pass. You have to make a reservation. I have a cabin. There were Baker Villas. Between Silver Plume and the Hell of Devil.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Turn off their road, you drive three miles up. There's two peaks up there, they're 14ers. We've got the cabin back in 1950. We saw six cars up there on a weekend. That was amazing. It's got to the point now, those peaks are so popular, the three-mile road, and there are littering cars parked all the way up that road. This year, the county put signs along there saying, no parking along the road. There's a parking lot up there, the Constitution, maybe 30 cars. So if you're not one of the first 30 cars to get up there, you don't climb. So if you can't go out and enjoy it, what's the point of living?
Yeah, I understand that. That's probably.
Most things, definitely. Yeah, no, we don't count visitors. Which, you know, we count residents and that's another piece. And when I was kind of talking about the non-housing housing. You know, so we've got these short-term rentals, we've got visitors that are just in a lot of the housing, but they don't count as a resident. And then we've also got investor that are investing in housing. And again, if, if by chance, and I didn't check home prices before I came here, but like, let's say Milliken is a little bit more affordable than, I'm making this up, I'm totally making this up, like more affordable than Johnstown. Just be aware that you could get a lot of investors coming in, buying up housing, and then that puts price pressure here as well. Not that it's bad, it's just be aware. I'm not saying yes, no. Have you? And especially if you've got a cute little Main Street like you do. Like I was driving and I was like, oh, it's nice.
I could not drive slowly on it. Oh, no. I've been driving really slow because I was doing the lift loop.
And there were definitely cars that were not pleased with me.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. And we'll go into the board meeting. My impression is invited to stay with the board meeting.